...one point in time as the best youth baseball field in Illinois. We're proud to do that, and that's the second of three award programs that we do. The one I'm here to promote tonight is the Neighborhood Hero Program. It's a beautification awards program. As you're aware, we were here last year a couple of times and brought 12 or 14 people who won that award for beautifying their yard. This is our promotional sign. Those who qualify and receive this honor, if you can see that all, are honored for showing pride in their property, their neighborhood, and their community. And we've attached the portion of the Crest Hill welcome sign as part of this honor. So this sign will go into the yard of those that win this honor this year. We have an open nomination period for anyone through June, and then in July we'll send out a team of judges to score out the nominees on a variety of criteria. The most important of which is, are they using horticulture and color in their yard? Something that makes our heads turn as we go past. This is probably the most democratic award possible because anyone can participate in it as long as they're planting in their yard to show pride in their property, their neighborhood, and hence their community. It's a very positive type awards program and one that we believe is infectious, that other neighbors will take an interest in and want to develop plantings in their yard that will attract our attention. Now, anyone can nominate, anyone, you can self-nominate in this program. We urge residents to look around and give us an email to let us know who they think we should be looking at for the Neighborhood Hero Award. They'll get this sign in their yard, they'll receive a proclamation from the city of Crest Hill, and an invitation to, again, come to the Crest Hill City Council to receive your thanks so you can see exactly who these individuals are who have taken such pride in Crest Hill as well as their own property. I've got an email address for us. I'm told that this could be picked up if the video's working. So projectacclaim@gmail.com is the email address if you want to nominate someone. Please write this down. So, Mr. Mayor, that's our program that we're promoting again this year. It'll be the second time in Crest Hill that we're doing this. We hope to have as many people as we had last year in front of you to receive your recognition for this program. I thank you very much.
Yeah, I know you've been doing it in Joliet for many years, and last year was our first year, and I think we had about nine or 10 winners, I believe, maybe even more than that.
I was double figures.
Yeah.
We're also adding Shorewood this year to what we're doing with this same program. They're quite enthused about it as well. So it's gonna be a busy summer.
Yeah, it was well received last year here. I think there was a lot of recognition. There's a lot of beautiful yards in the city of Crest Hill, and I would hope that we would have as many winners this year also.
I'm looking forward to it. This is actually fun for us. This is what we do, and we're looking forward to the outcome of the Neighborhood Hero Program for Crest Hill.
Comments from City Council, anybody?
Thank you for doing all this.
Our pleasure.
And you will be back then?
Yes.
In August, I would assume?
We'll work out a date, but we'll bring them back hopefully before the summer concludes. August would be good.
Okay. We will work together, and we will bring the winners back here. We'll give you nominations. So I would ask for City Council, just like last year, to, any nominations that you have throughout the city of Crest Hill, to email it to Mr. Zelenka at projectacclaim@gmail.com.
At gmail.com.
Yes. And certainly, I'm sure there'll be, just like last year, there were several that you had to go out and judge.
This is the most fun and rewarding program that we can do, telling people that they've won an award. They can't believe it. They've been planting in their yard and working hard in their yard, and someone has recognized them for that. So it's a very satisfying kind of project to do.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for choosing Crest Hill.
You're welcome.
For the program. We're very happy to have it here.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks, John. Appreciate it. Okay, moving back to our agenda, to our City Administrator, Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one agenda item before you this evening. That is the ratification of the agreement between the city of Crest Hill and MC Squared Energy Services. As noted in my report and as discussed at the May 21st council meeting, the city has gone out for a bid on our electrical aggregation, and we did find that an electric provider was able to provide us a lower per kilowatt rate, per kilowatt hour rate than ComEd. That rate will be 7.29 cents in effect for 24 months. Again, that is with MC Squared. Residents will be notified via letter on or around June 18th that we will be transitioning over to MC Squared. Residents that are currently with another provider will be given an opt-in option, and residents that are currently just with ComEd will be given an opt-out option. If you are not currently with another provider, you will by default be opted into the program unless you choose to opt out. All the information will be contained in that letter. Residents can call MC Squared. They do have a dedicated line for any of the Crest Hill questions that may arise. That phone number is 888-232-6351. Again, 888-232-6351. We are looking to make that transition in August to MC Squared. If residents are approached by any other provider, they are not affiliated with the city. The only city affiliated program is through MC Squared. So we would be seeking ratification of that agreement this evening.
Can we put something like that in the next water bill?
Absolutely. And it will be going on the website as well if it's not up already.
And can you just please clarify that people, so they realize they still call ComEd if they have service issues?
That is correct, and that will all be detailed on that letter as well. So your bill will still be through ComEd. Everything will remain the same. It's just the actual company that's providing the electricity that will change. So there really should be no noticeable change to anything that's going on with your electric service.
This is very similar, exactly what we did in 2011, '12, and '13.
Correct.
Okay. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Giselle. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Marco Coladipietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. That was the final item I had this evening. The report is on file, and for the public's knowledge, there will be a work session held on June 11th. Current topics include the city sign, cleaning services, RFP, and mobile food vendors. I would be happy to answer any questions this evening.
Any questions of City Administrator? Thanks, Heather. Moving on, Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Mr. Jim Egan. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, first item on the agenda for me is engineering services with David Van De Veel to manage the MFT program. The MFT program for 2018 is $4,200, or $29,000. And the engineering...
It says 429,000.
429,000.
Oh, okay. You said 429,000. I'm sorry.
Sorry. And the engineering services associated with that work is $34,850.
Motion would be in order? We did speak about this last Tuesday evening at the work session. No move.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Inman, seconded by Alderman Scoler. Questions or comments in regards to the motion for the MFT cost for 2019? Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Marco Coladipietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda for Public Works is the award of a PCC concrete repair contract. This is the repair of concrete items associated with utility dig-ups, water main breaks and sewer repairs. The low bidder from the bids received was M&amp;J Underground. Total estimated cost for that work is $12,600, and we're recommending to award to M&amp;J Underground.
So moved. Second. We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche, awarding 2018 PCC concrete repair work to M&amp;J Underground. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? We did also speak about this at last Tuesday evening's work session also. Roll call, please.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Marco Coladipietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And that's all the items I had for this evening, unless there's any questions for the Public Works Department?
Questions of Public Works, sir?
Yeah, I was wondering, the Broadway Biotic, the landscaping that's around it, who's supposed to be taking care of that? It's starting to look kind of shabby there. It's getting overgrown and not looking too well. So if you could look into who's gonna take care of that, or what we have to do to get that cleaned up. We just had that done last year, and it's getting kind of overgrown and not looking good.
I'm not familiar with that maintenance agreement with CN Railroad, but I'll look into that and report back.
Yeah, talk with Greg Koch.
Yes.
He should know.
Yeah, I know the field's installed it. I don't know if there was a warranty over a year on there. If need be, we can certainly send out some of the summer kits to start cleaning it up a little bit down there.
Yes.
I know they've been inundated with all the grass cuttings that they've had to do with how fast the grass is growing here, so they're hard keeping up with it.
They just hate to have us lose what we did and have to start all over again from scratch, you know? Let's catch it while it's early enough.
Right, okay. Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Jim. Moving on, Economic Development. Our Economic Development Director, Scott McMaster. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no agenda items tonight, but I would like to make mention quickly here, something exciting. Crest Hill was briefly, I guess you could say blurbed, in the Chicago Magazine, which has a pretty substantial readership. They did an article about the, some of the best places, some of the best suburbs and neighborhoods to live in and around Chicago. Crest Hill popped up on that list, and the magazine gave Crest Hill the Collar County Star because the median price of residential real estate in Crest Hill jumped 22% last year. So that was the most in any area outside of Cook County. I thought it was pretty cool that we were mentioned. It kind of outlines us in a list of Will County communities. I think it's good PR for the city. So, and actually, that was just brought to raise in my attention, my attention, about a week and a half ago, maybe. So I thought it was cool. I think it's something that everybody here should be excited about. We're really starting to make a name as a really good community here. So it's been fun to, as the last few months have gone on, and the more interest we're getting from not only businesses, but it seems like more and more people want to come here to live. So I think that's very exciting for the city.
Yeah, I think that award, which was unsolicited by us, I think everybody in this city, everybody at this table should be proud of the fact of the award that we had been given. I think that that is a combination of the last 10 years of doing a lot of hard work in regards to infrastructure and roads, adding a lot of new businesses, and changing our image with the new brand, and making Crest Hill the destination point. So with the award that we were given from the Chicago Magazine as the top city out of all the counties in the Chicagoland area with the median increase, I think now our hard work is paying off, and that is, it is great, and we should be proud of that, that so many people are looking at Crest Hill to move into Crest Hill.
Yeah, and just to add on to that, I did want to mention that the current median price for residential real estate is at 191,000. I think that's really nothing too shabby. So that's, I mean, we're in the mix with a lot of good communities around us, so that's good.
Yeah, and I know you have it on the website. If you want to purchase the magazine, it's the June and July, August, or June and July issue of Chicago Magazine.
Yeah.
You can get it at most grocery stores, new stats. Very good. Anything else, Scott?
That's it.
Any questions of Economic Development?
Yeah, Scott, I just, I don't know if it's more question or concern, but in the informational report, you've got that engineering's going on about Speedway and then another gas station at Caton.
Correct.
I mean, and if the Ricky Rockets development goes through, I mean, that's like three gas stations in that stretch. Is that something that we may want to consider?
Yeah, I'll be honest, we had an expert analyze Weber Road pretty much from Caton to Division and said we can support about four or five gas stations. So we'll have two on at least the east side. We're still working with Ricky Rockets to get them jump-started. I know they're having some issues as far as some of the land issues they got there, so. But I think with the traffic increasing down Weber Road, I think it's, I don't think any of those gas stations will be cannibalizing themselves.
The people that you're negotiating with, do they realize that there's two contracts and they're both gas stations?
They do, yes. Yep.
And then I guess I would just interject that I would, I would hope that we get like tier-one buildings there, there's tier-one.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, that's something we can certainly discuss with them. I mean, at some point, they'll be coming through to City Council to make a presentation, so at that time, I think it's, it'll be necessary to outline what you're looking for as a city.
Yeah, and going back to the Chicago Magazine, I mean, that was a combination of Amazon coming in because the phones were starting to ring off the wall as soon as Amazon made the announcement that they were moving in the Crest Hill. So again, it was a combination of everything working together, and it all takes time. Even development takes time. Anybody else? Questions? Comments? Okay, thanks, Scott.
Thank you. Police Department, we have Deputy Chief Brad Hertzman here this evening. Good evening, Brad.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Our police report is on file. I also have a informational memo that was presented for your information. I do have one agenda item, and that is the contract for police services for the Crest Hill picnic. The contract is for two officers with vehicles to work the Crest Hill picnic from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. on August 5th. I'm seeking Council's approval for this contract.
Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second. We have motion by Alderman Giselle, seconded by Alderman Coladipietro. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Marco Coladipietro.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Brad, do you know if Ed has gotten the Masons on board yet?
I know he's reached out. I don't know if he's gotten a response back from them yet.
All right, I'll check with him. Thank you.
That is all I have. I'd be happy to answer any other questions if you may have.
Any questions of the Police Department?
Well, I know you put this memo in here, but I certainly think that it should be said publicly because that's wonderful, that we had a police officer who did CPR on a newborn and saved a life. I think that is just really...
Yeah, I just didn't know if you wanted to mention it tonight or mention it when he's actually here, if that in fact is...
I don't think you can mention it enough. I think it's admirable, and I, my hat's off to Sergeant Posvin. I think it's just wonderful. Please tell him I said so.
I will do that.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Brad. Mayor's Report. I do not have any agenda items this evening, but I know that the people that are watching us live on television, we had some technical difficulties at the start of the meeting, so I just want to reiterate the fact that we did have a moment of silence for our past employee, Mr. Joe Trohow, passed away over the weekend. And Joe was our code enforcement officer for several years here in the city of Crest Hill after he retired from the Joliet Police Department. The only other item that I would like to speak about tonight is I had the privilege of attending both the Chaney-Monchi eighth grade graduation and the Richland Grade School eighth grade graduation with my wife, Vicki. I would like to say congratulations to all the students. Both of the ceremonies were very well done, and I wish everybody a safe summer, and to all our graduates that are going from grade school to high school, good luck with your next step and your next venture in life. And wherever you end up, always remember the things that you were taught at either Richland or Chaney-Monchi School. That is it for the mayor. If there's any questions, I will certainly try to answer them. Hearing none, we will move on to our City Clerk's report. Our City Clerk, Vicki Hackney. Good evening, Vicki.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no items on the agenda this evening, just my announcement because we're getting near and dear to our Free Shred Day, which is June 30th, 2018. It's from 9:00 until 11:00 a.m. at City Hall parking lot. It is sponsored by Resa's Auto Repair on Jury Court in Crest Hill, and we thank them. We do ask once again that you limit the boxes to two or three boxes, just so everyone has opportunity to bring their items to shred. And we will have volunteers available to help anyone, and you just pull up and we empty your boxes for everything to shred on the spot. That's all I have this evening.
Questions of the City Clerk? Thanks, Vick.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on, City Treasurer's Report. Our Treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to report regular and overtime payroll from 5:14, 2018, to 5:27, 18, in the amount of $206,344.11. I seek your approval on our list of bills, and the total is $582,501.52.
Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Giselle, seconded by Alderman Overland. Questions or comments in regards to the list of bills? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Marco Coladipietro.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Any questions of City Treasurer? Thank you, good night. Thanks, Glenn. Unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda. Anybody? New business. We have three Plan Commission recommendations. So we will begin with the first one, an ordinance approving a variation to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, 1815 Center Street. I will turn it over to our Economic Development Director, Scott McMaster, for some opening comments in regards to this request.
Thank you, Mayor. The Plan Commission is recommending this variation. Also, the petitioner, I believe, is here as well. They're looking to get a variance for the lot width, which is 48 feet. Our ordinance says it should be 70 feet. I believe the petitioner subdivided a lot and is putting two homes on it. So again, he's currently in the audience, and if you'd like to address any questions, you can come to the podium.
Mr. Ininguez?
Yes.
Please to the podium, sir. Would you please just state your name for the record?
Yeah, Felipe Rodriguez.
Okay. Anything you'd like to add in regards to what's already been said by Mr. McMaster?
Just what I mentioned at the Planning Commission meeting about a month ago or so, that the two lots have been in that size since 1918 per the plat, well before Crest Hill and well before planning guidelines for today.
And that plat was from 1918, so that's about 100 years old.
Right.
About.
Okay, so we're just, right now, we're just gonna talk about 1815.
Yeah.
For right now, for this variance that's being requested. So I will ask City Council if they have any questions in regards to the request that is being made by Mr. Ininguez.
So just to clarify, these two plots are already subdivided? They were just subdivided?
They are, yeah.
Is this the ones on the old Chaney School?
Yes. Yeah, I'm not familiar with the old Chaney School.
Yeah.
That's a 14-foot alley easement.
Right. My alma mater.
Any other questions? Okay, I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against case V-18-1-4-1, the request of Mr. Marcio Ininguez for a variance at 1815 North Center Street. Need to come to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Second request, if anyone would like to speak for or against, the variance request of Mr. Marcio Ininguez at 1815 North Center Street. Please come to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. And the third request, if anyone would like to speak for or against, case V-18-1-4-1 in regards to a variation at 1815 North Center Street by Mr. Marcio Ininguez. Please come to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. With that being said, ladies and gentlemen, you have an ordinance approving a variation to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, the petition of Marcio Ininguez at 1815 North Center Street. Motion would be in order? So moved. Second. Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Marco Coladipietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1779.
Okay. Next case that the Plan Commission handled was an ordinance approving a variation to Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, 1817 North Center Street, and that is case V-18-2-4-2, the request of Mr. Marcio Ininguez for a variance at 1817 North Center Street. I will turn it over to our Economic Development Director, Mr. Scott McMaster, for some opening comments in regards to this request.
Thanks, Mayor. This one, basically, Mayor's the last one. They're just seeking a variance on the lot width from 70 to 48 feet. Again, it's right next door, so they're looking to do that. They're building a pretty identical house on both lots.
Okay. Felipe, would you like to add anything in regards to that?
No. It's the same neighborhood.
It is. We have to do it separately, though.
Yeah.
So these will be side by side, so I will open it up for questions or comments from City Council to either Felipe or to Scott. Hearing none, I will ask again if anyone would like to speak for or against case V-18-2-4-2, Hearing none, I will, I will ask again if anyone would like to speak for or against case V-18-2-4-2, the request of Mr. Marcio Ininguez for a variance at the property known as 1817 North Center Street. You need to come to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Second request for case V-18-2-4-2, the request of Mr. Marcio Ininguez for a variance at 1817 North Center Street, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. And the third call, if anyone would like to speak for or against the variation, the variance request for 1817 North Center Street, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium to speak for or against the request. Therefore, you have an ordinance approving a variation to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, the petition of Marcio Ininguez for the property known as 1817 North Center Street. A motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Frichay, seconded by Alderman Dyke. Questions or comments in the motion? Roll call, please.
Tom Inman?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Marco Coladipietro?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Barbara Schaller?
Yes.
John Frichay?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1780.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you. Welcome to the city of Crest Hill. I know you live in Crest Hill now, but welcome again to the city of Crest Hill with two new homes that you're going to build. And anything we can do to help you out, please let us know. Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, the third case is an ordinance granting a special use permit to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, the petition of Extreme, 2017 LC Joliet Motors on Route 66, located at 1624 Broadway Street. You do have a memo in your packet asking that this case be tabled. I would ask for a motion for the tabling of this agenda item.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Frichay. Any comments, Heather, in regards to this? Any comments from City Council in regards to the motion to table? Roll call, please.
Barbara Schaller?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marco Coladipietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tom Inman?
Yes.
John Frichay?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that is it on our new business. Anybody have anything else? We will move on to Committee Liaison Reports. Anyone?
Yes. I would like to once again remind everyone that this Sunday at 11:00 a.m., we will have the Ladis Memorial Program, Sunday, June 10th, 11:00 a.m. It's a very solemn occasion and it's quite a bit of history for the city of Crest Hill. So, anybody who hasn't had an opportunity to attend it, I would recommend you do. It's a very, very moving ceremony and it's such a part of our culture that's so rich in this city, being the first city that, that did anything about this. I think we really should get as many people out there as we can. It's, and the park looks beautiful. I, I would like to thank Lupe from Green Gold Landscaping, who did go out there. He met me out there and I was out there today with him. And they did such a wonderful job on that park. It's like night, if you could have seen it two days ago and then you see it today, you would not believe you were in the same park. It's so beautiful. And they, I told him a little bit about the history before he did it and you can tell he really put his heart into it and he had a lot of passion for what he did. And I just want to thank him for making it look so beautiful for Sunday. Also, you want to remind him about the picnic?
I certainly can.
Thank you.
The Crest Hill picnic is scheduled for Sunday, August 5th, from noon to 10:00. So, come out and have a great time.
Ara's coming back? Strung Out's coming back?
If I could add too, that, that information about the Ladis Ceremony is on the website. So, if anybody needs information about where to go or what time it starts, it's at...
And we do have a rain, in case of rain, right, Nate?
Correct.
And that would be at?
At St. Ansel.
So, I'm hoping we have a beautiful day like today, but in the event it gets rain, we, we do have a place to move it to.
Anybody else, Committee Liaison Reports? I will wrap up Memorial Day in regards to the Crest Hill Veterans and Police Memorial Committee. It was one of the hottest memorial days that we've had in Crest Hill in a long, long time. I remember back 30 years ago, the anniversary that we celebrated here last week was just as hot, if not hotter, for the inauguration of the Veterans Garden back in 1988. So, we made some adjustments. We tried to get as many people into the shade. We had a different seating arrangement. We got about 90% of the people into the shade. I believe that the ceremony was a very solemn, respectful service for those veterans that have passed away and for those veterans that were killed in the line of duty. We also did recognize our two slain police officers, James Nink and Sergeant Tim Simonsen. We did have representation from both families. We had our Gold Star Mother, Fran Branchich. Her daughter and her granddaughter was there to lay the wreath. It was a very warm, humid, hot day, but God was smiling down on us as the wind picked up a little bit and gave us a little breeze. Our guest speaker, Mr. Andy Kenny, gave a very heartfelt tribute to the veterans. It was one of the best speeches that we've had in 30 years at the Memorial Garden. He also brought along six of the cadets from the Lockport Township High School Junior ROTC program, which he is in charge of. The flag folding presentation was very heartfelt and you could have heard a pin drop even with all the traffic that was traveling down Plainfield Road as the young cadets were doing that program. So, again, I believe it was a very respectful, very solemn occasion. Our numbers were a little bit down because of the heat, but that was to be expected. I would like to thank everybody that participated in the program. I would like to thank the committee for all their hard work and their volunteerism that they put into the ceremony throughout the year to make that garden look the way that it does. We did have representation from the city. Scott McMaster was there. Alderman Albert and our City Treasurer, Glenn Conklin, was at the ceremony. So, I'd like to thank them. Oh, and Alderman Coladipietro. That's right. I forgot about Marco. I did see him sitting on the shade tree as I was sweating. But thank you for, for all of the participation that everybody gave. You know, I made a comment during the program that for us to be in the heat and for an hour is a small sacrifice that we had to make to support those who gave their lives so we enjoy the freedoms that we have today. So, I, I ask that when you see a veteran, thank them for their service. When you see a police officer or a first responder, thank them for their service. We also had the ambulance here. I want to thank Lockport Township Fire Protection District for supplying a ambulance on site, just in case there was a need for it during the ceremony. But thank them, thank them for the, the service that they do for all the citizens of Crest Hill and all the visitors that pass through this city. So, I hope to see you all next year for our 31st anniversary. I believe it's going to be May 27th of 2019 and we will hope that we have a little bit cooler day. And we will again honor our veterans and our police officers for their sacrifices. Moving on, City Council comments. Anybody that would, this are positive City Council comments that you'd like to share with your constituents. We will begin with Ward 4 this evening. Alderman Inman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief tonight. I just want to congratulate Sergeant Pesavento on all of his quick thinking and saving the life of that newborn. That's a class act, you know? When, when the time comes and you're faced with it, putting your knowledge in action is a different thing. So, congratulations to the sergeant. Great guy and we're proud to have him part of our department, that's for sure. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, one thing I did forget about Memorial, we had, we had great representation from our own Crest Hill Police Department was there. We had about 12 or 14 of the officers that were present. So, thanks to them also was, they were standing in the sun most of the afternoon as we tried to get the elderly and the veterans into the shade. Alderman Albert?
It was certainly impressive to read that memo, chief. I know that Sergeant Pesavento was at the Memorial Day program, so I assume this took place after he left here. And he did stand in the heat there for a good amount of time, so hats off to him. And just another announcement before we end tonight, but the movies in the park, the first one at the Crest Hill Lions Club is hosting is this Saturday at Lions Park, which is right across the street from Chaney-Monchi School. They will be showing the Disney Pixar movie, Coco. So, we encourage you to get there early, get your spot. The movie will begin right around dusk, so we're hoping around 8:30. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Ward 3, Alderman Coladipietro.
I'd just like to congratulate and thank Sergeant Pesavento as well.
Alderwoman Oberlin?
Well, I already, I said what I said, but I will reiterate it because it's really, it's just so admirable. And I also want to thank the, the gentlemen in Public Works that went out there and pulled all those 40-foot weeds out from behind the monument. There was probably two or three dump trucks of those and they got all those out before the landscaper got in, so that was very good. So, please convey to them how thankful I am that they did that. Thank you.
Ward 2, Alderwoman Gazal.
Just want to wish all the graduates congrats. Wish you many success to all the eighth graders, high schoolers, and colleges. And also congrats to Sergeant Pesavento. He's one of the best for me. I like him a lot. He's a really good cop, so that's it.
Alderwoman Schaller?
Just wanted to remind everyone, now that the kids are all out of school, to be careful and mindful when you're driving because they're out and about. And also, again, also congratulations to Sergeant Pesavento. Great job.
Ward 1, Alderman Frichay.
Oh, thanks to, that's a benefit for what he did. And be careful around the streets now that children are out of school. Be running around and there are a lot of them out there, so be careful and have a nice summer.
Alderman Dyke?
I just want to say it's good to know that our Police Department has that training in CPR, so it can help anyone that's in need, no matter what the age may be, that there's comfort knowing that, that they can save a life. So, thanks to the department for that training and nothing else to add to what everyone else has said.
Okay, public comment. Anybody would like to address any council, need to come to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To our City Administrator, Heather, is there a need for an executive session?
No, there is not, Mayor.
Motion to adjourn, ma'am.
We have motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Frichay. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Barbara Schaller?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marco Coladipietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tom Inman?
Yes.
John Frichay?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Meeting is adjourned at 7:53 p.m. Thank you and good evening.